Collier County, Board of County Commissioners, Community Redevelopment Agency Board, Airport Authority, Meeting Agenda. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tamiami Trail East, 3rd Floor, Naples, Florida, 34112. February 28th, 2017, 9:00 AM. Board of County Commission Chambers, Collier County Government Center, 3299 Tamiami Trail East, 3rd Floor, Naples, Florida, 34112. February 28th, 2017, 9:00 AM. Commissioner Penny Taylor, District 4, BCC Chair. Commissioner Andy Solis, District 2, BCC Vice Chair. Commissioner Donna Fiala, District 1, CRAB Co-Chair. Commissioner Bert Saunders, District 3. Commissioner William L. McDaniel Jr., District 5, CRAB Co-Chair. Notice: All persons wishing to speak on agenda items must register prior to presentation of the agenda item to be redressed. All registered speakers will receive up to 3 minutes unless the time is adjusted by the chairman. Public comment on general topics not on the current or future agenda to be heard no sooner than 1:00 PM or at the conclusion of the agenda whichever occurs first. Requests to address the board on subjects which are not on this agenda must be submitted in writing with explanation to the county manager at least 13 days prior to the date of the meeting and will be heard under public petitions. Public petitions are limited to the presenter with a maximum time of 10 minutes. Any person who decides to appeal a decision of this board will need a record of the proceeding pertaining thereto and therefore may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceeding is made, which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based. Collier County Ordinance #2003-53 as amended by Ordinance 2004-05 and 2007-24 requires that all lobbyists shall, before engaging in any lobbying activities, including but not limited to addressing the Board of County Commissioners, register with the clerk to the board at the Board Minutes and Records Department. If you are a person with a disability who needs any accommodation in order to participate in this proceeding, you are entitled at no cost to you the provision of certain assistance. Please contact the Collier County Facilities Management Division, 3335 Tamiami Trail East, Suite 1, Naples, Florida, 34112, or call 252-8380. Assisted listening devices for the hearing impaired are available to the Facilities Management Division. Lunch recess is scheduled for 12 noon to 1:00 PM. Item 1: Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. 1A: Invocation by Pastor Greg Ball of Destiny Church. Item 2: Agenda and Minutes. 2A: Approval of Today's Regular Consent and Summary Agenda as amended. Expartee disclosures for provided by commission members for consent and summary agenda. 2B: February 3rd, 2017, BCC ULI Housing Study Meeting. Item 3: Service Awards. Item 4: Proclamations. Item 5: Presentations. 5A: Recommendation to review a presentation highlighting accomplishments of the Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council during 2016 to be presented by Margaret Wurtzel, Executive Director, Southwest Florida Regional Planning Council. Item 6: Public Petitions. Item 7: Public Comments on General Topics Not on the Current or Future Agenda. Item 7 to be heard no sooner than 1:00 PM unless otherwise noted. Item 8: Board of Zoning Appeals. Item 8 to be heard no sooner than 1:30 PM unless otherwise noted. 8A: This item to be heard at 1:00 PM. This item requires that all participants be sworn in and ex parte disclosure be provided by commission members. Recommendation to approve a resolution of the Board of Zoning Appeals of Collier County, Florida, for variance from Section 4.02.03. A Table 4 of the Land Development Code to reduce the minimum rear yard accessory structure setback line from 20 feet to 6.5 feet for a swimming pool spa pool deck and stairs on a waterfront lot within the resident single family zoning district on property located at 342 Trade Winds Avenue in Section 29 Township 48 South, Range 25 East, Collier County, Florida. Item 9: Advertised Public Hearings. Item 9 to be heard no sooner than 1:30 PM unless otherwise noted. Item 10: Board of County Commissioners. Item 11: County Manager's Report. 11A: Recommendation that the Collier County Board of County Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the Collier County Community Redevelopment Agency to enter into a loan agreement with TD Bank NA and issue a Series 2017 taxable note in the principal amount up to $5,500,000 to evidence a loan under the loan agreement all with respect to the Bayshore/Gateway Triangle redevelopment area and authorize all necessary budget amendments. This item is a companion item to 14B1. Item 11B: This item to be heard immediately following item 14B2. Recommendation to adopt FY 2018 Bud Policy, Mark Isaacson Corporate Financial and Management Services Division Director. 11C: This item to be heard at 10:30 AM. Recommendation to evaluate the site feasibility and financial requirements of developing a regional tournament caliber sports facility and to provide guidance on future actions. Item 11D: Recommendation to approve initial funding in the amount of $1.8 million plus a 10% contingency for conversion of multi-purpose natural turf fields to artificial turf for budget purposes. Authorize Necessary Tourist Development Council (TDC) Category B Tourism Promotion Fund 184. Budget amendments in the amount of $1.8 million and make a finding that this expenditure promotes tourism. Barry Williams, Director, Parks and Recreation Division. Item 11E: Recommendation to award a bid #16-7020 107th Avenue North Public Utility Renewal Project, Project #60139 and 70120 to Douglas &amp; Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $3,837,675 and authorize the necessary budget amendments. This is a companion item to Agenda Item 16C2, Tom Schmelick, Public Utilities Engineering and Project Management Division Director. 11F: Recommendation to award bid #16-7035 110th Avenue North Public Utility Renewal Project #60139 and 70120 to Douglas &amp; Higgins Incorporated in the amount of $5,182,405 and authorize the necessary budget amendments. This is a companion item to Agenda Item 16C3. Item 12: County Attorneys' Report. Item 13: Other Constitutional Officers. Item 14: Airport Authority and/or Community Redevelopment Agency. 14A: Airport Authority. 14B: Community Redevelopment Agency. 14B1: This item to be heard at 11:45 AN. Recommendation that the Collier County Community Redevelopment Agency (CRA) approve a resolution approving the form of a loan agreement between the CRA and TD Bank NA and authorize the issuance of the Series 2017 note taxable in the principal amount of up to $5,500,000. Authorize the CRA Chairman to sign the authorizing resolution and to execute and deliver the loan agreement and the Series 2017 note all with respect to the Bayshore/Gateway Triangle redevelopment area and authorize all necessary budget amendments. Pursuant to notice required under Section 163.346, Florida Statutes. This is a companion item to Agenda Item 11A. 14B2: This item to be heard immediately following item 5A. Recommendation to authorize the Bayshore beautification amendments to you proceed with design and permitting of the Thomas Drive/Hamilton Harbor Streetscape Design Project provided for Exhibit A to promote safer traffic patterns for both vehicle and pedestrian traffic by incorporating roundabout into the design. Item 15: Staff and Commission General Communications. 15A: Current BCC Workshop Schedule. Item 16: Consent Agenda. All matters listed under this item are considered to be routine and action will be taken by one motion without separate discussions of each item. If discussion is desired by a member of the board, that item or items will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. For more information on consent agenda items, call 252-8586.
Item 17: Summary Agenda. This section is for advertised public hearings and must meet the following criteria: 1. A recommendation for approval from staff. 2. Unanimous recommendation for approval by the Collier County Planning Commission or other authorizing agencies of all members present in voting. the BCC meeting on which the items are scheduled to be heard. And 4. No individuals are registered to speak in opposition to the item. For those items which are quasi-judicial in nature, all participants must be sworn in. For more information on summary agenda items, call 252-8586.